We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Troutman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any additions or deletions from the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, the consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 4th, 2014. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of February 6th, 2014. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $2,201,037.13. Number eight is to acknowledge the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Skyview Ranch Road District as submitted by the auditor. Number nine is approval of the request to change the alternate liaison assigned for the Spring Creek Advisory Committee representing the NRCS to Ms. Cassandra Bell. Number 10 is to declare surplus a key watcher system for the purposes of trade-in as submitted by the Sheriff's Office. Number 11 is to certify the 2013 expenditures from Title III funds and authorize the chairperson's signature as submitted by the fire administrator. Number 12 is approval of the permit to occupy the right-of-way for the South Dakota State Senior Games Road Bicycle Race as submitted by the Highway Department. And finally, number 13 is to recognize the volunteers for the month of January 2014 as submitted by the Human Resource Department.
Does anyone wish any of the items from the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove number five.
Okay, number five.
Number nine.
Number nine has been requested and I would request number 12 be pulled. Any other requests?
The other one was, which one did you request?
Number 12.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda with items five, nine, and 12 removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. On page three of the minutes, it says, uh, let's see. Move by David, review of proposed bills, a, uh, move by David, second by Troutman, that the Commission Office Manager send emails to appropriate committee members to support. HB 1097, SB 135, and HB 1069, vote unanimous. I voted against that.
You're asking, does that correction be made then?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Well, I'll make the motion, I guess.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to correct the minutes of February 4th. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item nine.
Good morning. My name is George Ferby and I, on item nine, I have a couple of concerns and we've had concerns at two different levels. But before I express my concerns, I'd like to ask the question of the Board. Why do some organizations or individuals represented have alternates and others don't?
I'm not sure why that is, but in terms of the credentials of the individuals involved with the NRCS and the fact that they have the capacity to provide technical input to the committee, the assurance that someone would be there is an advantage of having an alternate. But if you have a concern, what concern do you have?
Anybody else want to respond to the question?
I asked you a question.
As I stated, I have concerns at two different levels, but first I had a question and you answered the question and thank you for that. And I'm glad you mentioned the credentials or qualifications of the people. My observation's been that NRCS has not contributed in any way, shape, or form at advisory group meetings from the technical standpoint. Now, I haven't made it to all the advisory group meetings. In fact, I was barred from one of them, so that one I can't respond to, but... So the inconsistency is just that. West Dakota, as an example, doesn't have an alternate, but NRCS does, Forest Service does. So it's just a matter of who the organization is, whether they get an alternate or not. Is that correct?
Do you feel that this alternate is detrimental to the program?
I did not. I do not, but let me repeat. The meetings I've been to, I have not observed that individual making any contribution technically to the advisory group. In fact, I specifically asked the two individuals, the technician and administrator, if they even looked at the projects, and as I recall, had not. So anyway.
Yeah.
My concerns, my two concerns are, number one, the advisory group period in light of the task force recommendation when they met in November, I'm wondering if we should even be talking about the advisory group. That discussion probably should be deferred to planning and zoning under Spring Creek Funding. My other concern is here in less than two months, my wife and I are going to write a pretty good check to the federal government for income tax. To pay NRCS a salary and the Forest Service salary and so on and so forth. And I resent the fact that NRCS exists 60, 70 years now. You think that they'd be done with rural developing, but...
Question on the agenda is not whether or not the NRCS should exist, so stick to the question.
Excuse me, did I have the floor, Your Honor?
That doesn't matter. If you have concerns about this issue, express them and we'll proceed.
I'm trying to express them and thank you.
Do we have a motion relative to item nine?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to put Cassandra Bell in as the alternate representative for NRCS.
We have a second. No, we have a motion on the floor, so speak to the motion, please.
Hi, Dan Richard. I do have one question or two questions, maybe. This is the second time, the last meeting I couldn't make because of the weather, that this has been on a consent agenda and I have a complete package here that I went through. Well, West Dakota is trying to get changes in personnel to the Board that have been turned down, have been told by your manager that it's in our contract, which is, I don't know what business that is, the county commissions. And several places in here where it's been brought to my attention that West Dakota has not contributed any money. Yet, I checked back on RC&amp;D from the last meeting in 2010, $1,500 was the last contribution. And RC and our, NRCS has not contributed anything. The only contribute I can find is an in-kind from the Forest Service. So I think we got a double standard going on here. Thank you.
Any other remarks? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 12, I pulled that off the consent agenda because the request for the state junior bicycle race is on Lower Spring Creek Road. And occasionally, we've had, we have a lot of recreational riders on that road, but the, when the last race was held, I had some calls from people who were hauling cattle and hay and things up and down the road that were startled and surprised by a flock of bicyclers. And they asked that there be some advance announcement or posting of some signs or something like, hey, there's going to be a race here on such and such a day at certain time. They fear for the liability of injuring a bicyclist. And so I brought this off the agenda to address that. And I guess in the crux of the whole thing, I wonder why they don't have the races on the bicycle paths. We've got lots of them, but be that as it may, that was my point.
So what kind of signage could we use on that? Could we, I mean, I guess we have highway here. I'm not real sure. Would we have, like, signs up for a couple days before? What are you thinking?
Yes. Some kind of a sign that says, on this date or the date coming up, there will be bicycles on the road from 8:00 AM to whenever.
Good morning. Heine Jung, the county highway superintendent. Yes, I know there was some concerns and a little bit of conflict last year. She admitted that. That's why I asked her if she was going to have signage and volunteers at certain points along the route. She said they would. I guess I'm not opposed. We could make that a condition of approval, that they have to post some signs two days or three days prior to the race or four days, whatever. We can make that a condition of approval if you'd like. Or you could say no. We don't want them there.
The... If we were to make that a condition of the approval, would we need to back up and resubmit? Or how would you do that?
No, you pulled it off. You could make the condition.
Any thoughts from the Commission?
I think that Heine should get together with Kristy Lynch, the applicant, and work something out with signage as appropriate a few days before and volunteers and signage during the race.
You could continue this for the next meeting and I can get back in contact with her and said, this is going to be a requirement. Can you provide it for us?
Very comfortable with that.
I'd make a motion to continue this for the next county commission meeting and request that the applicant provide us with some plan of giving a three-day notice, posted notice, before the race. And I think they've already covered in here that they're going to have flaggers and signs during the race, so the concern is what kind of signage can they put out prior to the race?
I guess I didn't ask that particular question, but I can.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heine. Okay, the next item is item 14, a lien release request. Say your name, please, for the record.
This is Eleanor B. Baker, Rapid City, South Dakota.
Okay, do you have any comments you wish to make?
I was trying to find out what the bill was sent to me for the lien on the property that I am on, to see what the bill was about and why it was never sent to me when it was billed in 1996. The one I came about, and then I found there had been other bills posted back to '79 that had never been sent to me. And they were not paid because I didn't even have them.
Julie, or does this come under your office in terms of being able to?
As always, the reason the bills were coming out now is we just sent a mass file to CCB for collection, as well as we did a mailing from our office. The applicants, we have always been told, we don't participate in the application or the rendering of services and payment of those services. We are told by those departments that do that, that the individual is told that a lien will be placed on their property and that they would be responsible for that. It appears these are all for medical.
Any questions by the Commission?
Are you saying?
There is no William Baker.
She's contending that the part of the liens are co-filled between an Eleanor Baker and a William Baker. And she's contending, she's saying that there is no William Baker. We would have filed the lien based on the information that we were given from Health and Human Services.
So you don't know a William Baker?
No, sir, I do not. I know a Billy R. Baker of the past. He's my ex-husband who passed away last September.
I see.
There is no William Baker.
Have you looked at this list of bills?
Yes, I have.
Did you receive the services?
What do you mean, the services?
Medical services?
I more than likely did.
Okay.
But at the time I received them, I did not receive bills from the people that I owed money to, if that was right.
Well, the county received them and paid the bills. But, so you've got property that there's a lien on, is that it?
If that's what this is.
That's what this is, yes.
And I've never been notified of it before this.
Okay, and what, are you wanting to sell your property or what?
No, I do not.
Okay.
She would have gotten contacted from CCB for collection.
I take it, ma'am, that you own your property because you've got, you pay insurance and property tax?
Yes, sir, I do. I keep my bills up to date as best I can. I was put out of work in 1983 because of medical problems.
And apparently you had some medical problems and you did not have insurance to cover it?
When I worked, I was covered by, the last people I was covered by were Duhamel. That was the last time I had worked, was in 1983.
Looks like these are all since 1983.
Well, I had some here that were back in, I had some as far back as '79.
They were paid, though, it looks like.
And that's what they should be.
Pardon?
I was hoping they were paid.
Yeah, they were. The '79 one, or the 1971 was paid in '79 and 1971 was paid in '79. But it doesn't look like there's been any payments since then.
And I've been on disability since '83.
Okay, well, when the county pays, you know, when the county has to step up and pay the bill, then that's what creates the lien on the property.
That's why I was wondering why I never got the bills for it.
I don't know. I assume you, I don't know. I guess I can't tell you why you didn't give it up.
I'm trying to figure out what this $108 is for 1996 here and why I get a bill for it now, because I would have paid that had I been billed for it.
Well, if you were making the, if you were on disability, then how are you going to pay for it then, that you're not going to pay for it now?
I would have made some payments on it at that time. I wouldn't have let it build up.
Well, I don't have a problem, Mr. Chairman, I guess, making a motion to tell CCB to stop collection efforts, but since she owns property and owes us in excess of, what, $14,000? I don't see any reason to get rid of the whole lien. It looks to me like from her income, she probably can't afford to make payments.
I'll second that.
Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
I was trying to cut it.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair. Ma'am, do you understand what's going on here now? They're going to pull it from the collection agency, so they won't be trying to collect it from you, but it's going to stay on your property.
Okay.
The lien will stay on your property.
Okay.
So if you ever sell that house or when it gets sold, then this lien will have to be paid.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
And Karen, I will recuse myself from this. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is item 15, and I understand we're trying to have a testimony by telephone.
$79.
Okay, you're on. Speaker phone in front of the Commission.
Okay.
Okay, we have, this is Chairman Peterson, and we are, as a Commission, looking at your request to have your lien released. So any of the Commissioners that wish to address your situation will do so. Does anyone wish to?
I guess I'd like to hear from the applicant as to why he wants this lien released. Looks like it was for public defender services. And so I'm curious of why he wants us to release it.
Did you hear that, sir?
Yes.
Would you care to respond?
I'm sorry, I can't hear all that well through the phone.
We'll try to fix that.
Are you there, sir?
Yes.
I'm going to restate your question.
Okay, you repeat the question, Commissioner Holloway.
All right, my question to you, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, the question is, looks like this, the services that was received was for the public defender, and I'm wondering why you would want us to release this lien at this time? I understand that it's 24 years old, but it's still a valid lien.
Yes, I understand that. My issue with it is, it was 24 years ago when I was a minor of the age of 16. I paid everything that was sent to me back then. I'm wondering why this was not brought up 24 years ago. It would have been paid then. It's just all of a sudden coming up after 24 years is what I have an issue with.
Well, I can't tell you why it wasn't, a bill wasn't sent out to you, but it is, it's a valid charge for services rendered.
Okay, as a minor, as I was the age of 16, 24 years ago.
Sir, you're going to be addressed now by Jay Alderman, our Assistant State's Attorney.
Thank you, Chairman. I do want to speak to this issue. This is Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. It's my understanding and reviewing the records that were submitted, because this is an old case number, there was difficulty in trying to gather all those records. Our office did the best it could, and there as I can tell, this was a delinquent offense back in 1990. And why that is relevant is that as a delinquent offense, the parent or parents have the obligation under law to support the minor child. And the lien statutes, I'm pretty certain of this, are clear, that a lien can only be placed in that situation on a delinquent offense. There's other exceptions that I don't believe apply here, but on the delinquent offense, you can only place a lien against the parents and their property. So it'd be my position that this lien is incorrect in that it names him, excuse me, and attaches to any property he may have. So it'd be my recommendation to the Commission to release this lien. It's for $79.75.
Mr. Chairman, based upon our State's Attorney's recommendation, make a motion to release this lien.
Should we find out where his parents are?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are your parents still around Pennington County or in South Dakota?
No, they're not in South Dakota.
So they're in North Dakota?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so Jay saying, following up with what you said, can't we, we can attach that to his parents, correct?
Uh, in South Dakota.
Nothing to attach.
Not in North Dakota?
I'm not so sure about North Dakota.
The only thing between us and him is a barbed wire fence.
That's something I can look into, but I know that if you have a valid lien in Pennington County, you can file that lien in any other county in the state of South Dakota where the debt or has property. I do not know about crossing jurisdictional lines and filing it elsewhere in the United States. That's something I'd have to see if we have the authority to do that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would agree that we should go after his parents. Unfortunately, for $80, I'm not sure. I wanted to have our State's Attorney spend a whole lot of time researching this and going after somebody out of state for $79.
Okay, any further comments? If not, we have a motion?
I guess, could you follow up with me on what you find out about being able to go to North Dakota?
Okay, we, sir, we have a motion and a second to release your lien. And if you object to that, we'll take that into consideration, but otherwise, if the motion passes, we're done doing business. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Paul? Hey, this is Holly.
Okay, the next item is item Okay, the next item is item sixteen.
Erin Romi, Paints County Health and Human Services. This is kind of a unusual case, and for me to be up here speaking of it, but I became involved with this case when this individual was being transferred from one facility to a transitional facility. At that time, I knew that there would be some disability payment and some retroactive payment coming to this individual at some point. I didn't know how much it would be, but I stayed in contact with the payee and the social worker until that payment was received. When that payment was received, then I proposed that, although that she has a lot of other debt, I proposed that of the nine thousand dollars, nine thousand some odd dollars that she received, that she would put eight thousand towards her lien in Pennington County, and to request to see if that could satisfy the lien. This individual is going to be long-term disabled, probably not much, not really any earning capacity. I felt that if we had the eight thousand in hand now, it would be better than making maybe five-dollar payments for the rest of her life. So this is what I proposed. The payee hasn't paid, is still holding this money. She's not paid any of her other debt, and she said she would honor that until I was able to bring this before the board.
Any questions by the commission?
Mr. Chairman, so this is going to be an ongoing six, seven hundred dollars a month?
No. This individual is now in a...another facility, and her, she is now...she now has Medicaid, and the Medicaid is paying for that, that portion of her care, although she has a portion of her care that she has to pay for also.
Just a different taxpayer paying it again.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair, so are you...are you looking at an indication from us whether we would accept the eight thousand and then release the balance of the lien?
Yes.
I would...I would think we wouldn't want to release the balance of the lien until we had the eight thousand in hand, but I think that's probably as good a deal as we're going to get.
I really feel that, because we're not first in line for the debt, but I've been working very closely with the social worker and the payee. She does not have control of her funds, the payee does. So if that is something that we could agree upon, then the payee would write a check directly to Pennington County. And then I felt that she had a...there was a future there, but I don't think her earning capacity is ever going to be more than what she's getting right now through social security.
I would make a motion that we have Karen continue to work with the payee to put this deal together and then bring the lien release for the balance back to us, and at least that then that we would be supportive of that at that time.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Karen. Next item is item seventeen, seventeen A.
Good morning. KJ Peterson, Chief Deputy Auditor. I have posted the notice of a general fund supplement to the Mountain Pine Beetle budget for two thousand and fourteen in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. That is one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents of revenue that was received in two thousand and thirteen and not spent, and also the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that we will receive, I believe, as the third installment from the state for the Mountain Pine Beetle budget. So it's a combination of unassigned reserves and current year revenues that will support this two thousand and fourteen budget.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a supplement to the two thousand and fourteen general fund Mountain Pine Beetle budget in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven dol...four hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents from unassigned, excuse me, fund balance and current year revenues.
Sir, a second. Second. With the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, is that correct? All right. Any further comments?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. When we make that motion and designate where the money's coming from, and if the money doesn't come from there, then the spending authority goes away?
That is a standing motion that the board has had for some time, and if for some reason that third installment were not received, I'm sure Scott would be back and probably ask for support from the county. I believe that it's pretty firm.
Well, it is part of a contract for the funds for last year, and it spans this season through June thirtieth.
With the state.
With the state.
I have seen contracts that we have with the federal government, and they don't pass, so I would imagine the state probably doesn't have to either.
Oh, I suppose, but it would be unusual.
You're right, but it goes away. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item seventeen B.
Good morning. Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. As per the continuance of the item of a piece of surplus property that the county commissioners ordered appraised for private sale, the value of the property has come in at three hundred dollars. What I need from the board, which since it's under five hundred dollars, the board can, without notice, set a price and sell that property to Mr. Dan Gaskill, who is the property owner that requested the property, for a set price plus the thirty dollars filing fee, and approve the chair's signature to the quitclaim deed, which I have here with me to fill in the amount. According to Jay, the board can set any amount for that piece of property. The ninety percent rule does not apply.
Mr. Chair? Yes. I'll make a motion to see where this lands. I'll make a motion that we put the price of four hundred dollars on this piece of property, plus the thirty-dollar filing fee, and approve the chair's signature to a quitclaim deed. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to put the price of four hundred dollars on this property and the thirty-dollar filing fee, and to allow the chair's signature on a quitclaim deed. Any further comments or questions?
Well, Mr. Chair, could I ask why four hundred rather than the three hundred it was appraised at?
Would you care to answer? If I remember right, the taxes owed against the property were way more than that, and that's, I think, the gentleman offered five hundred for it the last time he was here, so that's a happy medium between three and five. So your bargaining talents just popped out? So? You're a horse trader. Why not? Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'd make a substitute motion. I'd make a substitute motion to accept the appraisal of the surplus property described as Lot fourteen, Block five of the original town site of Quinn, tax ID number six zero one one two, had a value of three hundred dollars, which was the appraised value, and wish to proceed with the private sale to Mr. Daniel Caskill?
Caskill.
For the price of three hundred dollars plus thirty-dollar filing fee, and approve chair's signature on the quitclaim deed.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion. Any questions or comments about the substitute motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I...it's not, you know, it's not that big a deal, frankly, but our...and appraisals are not an exact science, and our appraiser that we pay considerable money to every year had an appraised at six or seven hundred, one of those figures, I think.
Nine hundred?
Nine hundred. So I don't think four hundred is out of line.
Any other comments? Okay, we have subs... Mr. Chair, I do. Would you care to divulge the difference in the people that you hired to appraise this, and where they started, and where the top end was that they had before they settled on the three hundred dollar figure? I did not. Once they were shown the property lines, then, let's see, Kevin Wessel, or anyway, the chairman of the town council, and myself stepped away, and Mr. Gaskill, and the three appraisers did their thing, filled out the paper, and handed it back to me. I did not participate in the discussion in any way. But didn't you have a figure that they put down on that after the fact, when they came to the conclusion of the three hundred? It seems to me it was between three and six or something on that order that I've been told. It was from two to five, as I was told afterward. And I totally agree with you. That is the figure, I think, but I just wondered if you'd tell me what it was. Thank you. Okay, we have a substitute motion. You want a roll call vote? Yes. Rather than fight over a hundred dollars, yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Okay. Next item is item eighteen.
Good morning. Brian Mueller with the Pennington County Sheriff's Office. At the last commission meeting, you folks approved us ordering some patrol vehicles, and on the state bid contract this year, the Ford Explorer is listed twice, and the contract number that we gave you was for the wrong vehicle. The police package is actually referred to as the Ford Police Interceptor, and so we're here today to ask for a correction and for authorization to order the Ford Police Interceptor as outlined in the letter that we provided. It's a difference of seventy-nine dollars from the one that you approved at the last meeting.
Any questions?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to make that change. I guess I would rather have our law enforcement have an interceptor instead of an Explorer.
Exactly. Thank you.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Brian. Next item is item nineteen. Items from equalization.
It's my understanding that Auditor Pearson is going to present the abatement.
Mr. Gaskill is paying as we speak. The abatements, as presented from the Director of Equalizations, are attached, and as per Shannon's, Rittberger, Director of Equalizations, comment, he would like to pull tax ID eight zero zero one five nine eight from approval. Otherwise, the rest of the list, he is recommending. Doesn't specifically want a denial, he just wants it pulled at this time. So the rest of the list as attached in your packet.
Okay, do we need separate motions on each one?
No, you can approve the list pulling eight zero zero one five nine eight and approve the rest of the list. His reasonings are attached. Total for the city of Rapid City was four thousand, six, eighteen, ten. The one for Chase Manhattan Bank, the two were for two thousand, which one? Two thousand, two nineteen, sixty-four. Plus the one for Anthony Ferber for eight oh five oh six. One they're pulling is for two thirty, one twenty. The mobile home that we're requesting to be pulled has been moved without a moving permit, and our treasurer wants to proceed to either have the people pay the taxes or levy the fine against them for moving without a permit. They know where it's at.
Any questions by the commission?
I make a motion to approve the abatements with the exception of eight zero zero one five nine eight. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
So when the moving permit is issued, and you may not know this, when the moving permit is issued, the assessor's office is supposed to, or equalization office is supposed to get notified on that, so they can pull these off?
Well, they have to pay their taxes up to the point that they're moving it, and I believe the...this is, from what I understand, the permit could be more than the taxes, and we haven't taken very many of these to that level, and it's kind of a trial basis to see if the law has any teeth in it, especially since we know where it's going.
But I see there was a couple of these that there was a moving permit issued.
And then we have to abate the remainder of the taxes for the year that it's not here.
Okay, so...all right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty, Highway Department.
Good morning. It's that time of year to proceed with our bridge inspections that are due this year. We have sixty-six bridges due for inspection this year. Federal government requires that we inspect them every two years, and our hundred and thirty-two or three bridges are staggered on a two-year period, so we don't have to do it all in one year. But last year, we used Interstate Engineering out of Spearfish. They've done an excellent, excellent job, and we feel comfortable with them, and if you look at the list, there's really only two firms in this area that do bridge inspections. If we try to go and select somebody farther away, their mileage and fees, all per diem fees would add to the inspection, so we would recommend that the commissioners select Interstate Engineering to do our two thousand and fourteen bridge inspections and approve... and approve, sign and approve the attached resolution.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That'd be my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, the next item is items from the public defender.
Good morning, Eric Witcher, Director of the Public Defender's Office. I have prepared a memorandum for the commissioners requesting the appointment of a second chief deputy in the public defender's office with the focus being a magistrate supervisor. I went through the advisory board in January when they also approved this position. It's my recommendation, and if I can describe just briefly what this person would be doing. Of our 5,000-plus cases that we see through the public defender's office on an annual basis, about 3,000 of those will be magistrate cases. There'll be misdemeanors or order to show causes. What we have now is six attorneys, five, and then also one who's been acting gratis because I asked her to as somewhat of a supervisor of those, to be my eyes and ears in those magistrate courtrooms, to organize that staffing and to make sure that it runs smoothly. And so it's about 60% of the cases that we handle in the public defender's office. I thought that this was necessary within about the first month that I arrived here. And it's just proven itself that yes, in fact, we need somebody, I need somebody there to be a liaison between the magistrate judges and myself, as well as the state's attorney's office, as well as the clerk of courts office, as well as the sheriff, whatever else that we need. So, for based upon those reasons, I would ask that that be approved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Eric, if I recall, when we discussed this earlier, your plan is to kind of rotate that, rotate people in and out of that about every two-year assignment or something?
That's correct. And what, what I'm going to internally, the way I'll manage it is, I'll say it's a one-year essentially an appointment. So, this would run through the balance of 2014. At the end of 2014, I would like to talk to the individual to see if they're still want to continue to do this. This is not an easy position. It takes a lot. If they want to continue, if I think that they should continue and potentially do another year. But yeah, about a year to two years. And the attorneys that I think would work at this is people who've had three, four, or five years of experience, someone who's maybe not quite comfortable yet in felony court, but can do a lot more than just take misdemeanor cases. And potentially, if I have somebody in felony court and they want to get some management experience, I think it'd be a good fit, they could come down and do it for a year. It's another possibility. But, but yeah, this is not something that I think I'd have an individual stay in for five, 10, 15. I just don't see it like that. And I would like to have several people gain some management experience. And as they transition from a younger attorney to a more experienced attorney.
And it was my understanding you're kind of telling the people up front, if they step down out of that, then they'd go back to their-
That's correct.
Prior grade.
I have had a frank discussion with the individual in the memo about that, that this is a one-year thing, potentially two years, but then you would go back, and she's in agreement with that, so.
Any other questions, comments? Nick, do you have any input?
Good morning, Nick Strude, HR Director, Pennington County. Eric came and visited with me on this and kind of explained, he had to bring me up to speed on the magistrate issue. And we kind of put this together. I did get a chance to meet with Judge Lindgren, who handles a lot of the magistrate court for Eric, and she was supportive of this, she thought it was needed. So I want to thank her for her time that she gave me to explain how that worked. And so Eric said he went through the proper channels, which is the, his public defender board. And then he came to me, and so I just kind of helped him put together some of the nuts and bolts as far as the wage and the wage scale, so that's, that was my involvement.
I would make a motion to authorize, authorize the public defender's office to create a second chief deputy position as, as been outlined to us. At a grade, at a grade 24.
I'll second it and then you can, yeah. I believe he also, we also need as part of that motion to set this person at this-
I thought I'd do that in a separate motion. When, when this says the request by grade would go to a grade 24, why is that? Is that because they're now a chief deputy and so we have chief deputies at 24? Is that the theory of that?
And not to talk about two motions, but if the wish of the commission is to just follow the wage policy, we wouldn't need a motion to that effect. So, the only motion we would need after this one, if you wished, was to move her outside of the wage policy. Again, not to talk about two motions, but.
Okay, are we clear on the motion?
Mr. Chair, would you just say, in support of this, of the motion that I've laid out here, we hired Eric to come in and, and move forward that public defender's office. I think he's done a good job. I've talked to some of the judges and, and I think, and the state's attorney's office. And I think that public defender's office is, is operating much better under Eric's direction than what we've seen in the past. He's got some organization and management involved with it. By separating some of his attorneys to be misdemeanor attorneys to start off with and gain that experience, I think that's what the state's attorney does with their new attorneys coming in. So, I think he's doing a good job. I think we ought to support him when he comes in with these kinds of recommendations.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Just for clarification purposes, the second item again would be actually discussing the person he wants to put in there. If it's the wish of the commission just to follow the wage policy, then we wouldn't need a motion today. But the three steps that we put at the bottom, those would need to be a motion of the board because they are outside of our stated wage policy.
Well, frankly, I'm not one to like to go outside of the policy very much, so I'm not inclined to make that motion.
Does anyone care to make a further motion? If not, we'll consider the matter dealt with. And are you comfortable with that?
Very good. I, I guess I would just, I would state that the individual has been performing many duties since gratis for the past six months or so. And I know that this is an increase in responsibility workload. So, I would ask that, that she be, there be a motion outside the wage policy, but I understand the will of the commission.
Anything further? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 22, the request for waiver of fees, Rimrock Community Center.
Good morning, my name is Mike Ryan, and I represent the Johnson Siding Community Center. I think as most of you know, and possibly for those of you that don't, those three or four inches of snow that we had in October demolished the building. So, we could take that three inches and say it's three foot, and that would be real good. Anyhow, the community center up there is, is a local, private, nonprofit. And we're registered and, and we were incorporated in 1984. We're going to have to totally rebuild that community center. And what we're requesting is if Pennington County could possibly waive their fees that are involved in the rebuild from fees that we paid for the variance applications. We have a setback issue and so forth. So, I know that there are probably some fees involved in the variances that you can't probably reimburse because you actually did pay those. And I'm not sure what that dollar amount is, but there's approximately $350 probably in those fees. And the building permit fees are probably going to be in the vicinity of $2,500 to $3,000. I think that's, you base that on a 1% of your, of your building costs. So, the long and short of it is, we could probably be spending in fees somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000. And we use that community center not only for the local community up there, but the county and even Rapid City, the state, they use that for various meetings that they have up there and want to notify the public. And so we're coming to you and asking you if there's a way that we could possibly waive those fees. And I guess with that, I'll just shut up.
Dan, do you have any comments?
Well, the amount of fees you'd be waiving if you still want him to pay the advertising cost, which is $48, and you'd be waiving $322 as far as the variance request, the building permit. We do not have that yet, it's 1% of the construction cost. We don't have, and we don't know what that construction cost is yet.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. I see in here you say that in your application, center's used by the county, state, federal government for many functions, including elections. Do you charge us for elections up there? Are you using it for elections?
I'm not aware of that, but do you know, Bob?
Mr. Chair, I can tell you that they, they do pay the community center for use of the hall to have elections. But that's generally about all of it when it comes to the building, or to the government entities using it.
Okay, any, any other questions or comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for reference too, they did previously waive the fees for Rochford Community Hall too. They gone through a variance plat and a number of applications, and all those fees were waived.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to allow the approval of the waiving of building permit fees and other permit fees in the rebuilding of the Johnson Siding Community Center. And that the community center pay all advertising costs. That's deducted out of pocket to the county.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So, so this motion, and, and right now is just the waiving of the fees. Later, we're going to deal with the variance itself, is that correct?
Yeah, the variance is actually on today's agenda.
Okay.
That'd be the second item that you'll be hearing in regards to Board of Adjustment.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And I would sure, I won't make a part of the motion, but I would sure think that the Board of Directors there would seriously considering being very nice to us when we conduct our elections in that building in the future.
Commissioner Davis, in your motion, what was your intent relative to the fees surrounding the variance? Were they included in?
Yes, in my motion. For all, all fees, not the variance itself, but the fees for.
With the exception of advertising costs.
Are you clear on that, Karen?
In addition, you're including the building permit, which we don't know what that is yet.
That's also part of the motion, because we know about what it's going to be.
Okay. Everyone clear on the motion? Do you understand it, Dan?
Yeah.
So, any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Thank you. Thank you. Now we need a motion, oops. We're too soon. So.
Make a motion to take a 10-minute break.
We have a motion and a second for a 10-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. We're a couple minutes early yet from the posted time, according to that clock back there. But I think if we have a motion to convene as a Board of Adjustment, that Dan can stutter and stammer for a couple minutes until we, we start. But do we have a motion?
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to convene as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Item A.
Good morning, Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request 1401 for Larry Shorb, Clifford and Mary Shorb, and John Preston as the agent. This is to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 11 acres in a general ag zoning district. And actually, we're recommending that this be continued to the April 1st Board of Commissioners meeting. To, there were some issues in regards to who was required to do the plating jurisdiction. It is actually in the Hermosa Three Mile Plating Jurisdiction. They have since indicated they don't want to plaid it, and they want Pennington County to plaid it. So, that was the confusion. We want the two to run together, so we're asking that this be continued so they're held on the same meeting.
Second, Eric, that's my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying. Next item is item B.
Item B is a variance request 1402 for Rimrock Community Church, or Club, Mike Ryan as the agent. This is to reduce the minimum required setback distances to, and to waive the off-street parking requirements in a general commercial zoning district. Staff is recommending that if the Board approves it, we'd recommend two conditions be added. It's located at 12270 West Highway 44, located northwest of the intersection of Highway 44 and North Peak Road. It is on a .44 acre parcel and is currently the location of a community center that the roof has collapsed. And they are actually requesting to waive off-street parking requirements and to reduce the front and side yard setbacks from 25 feet to 12 and a half feet, and from the side yard from eight feet to five feet. And currently, the property consists of a 54-foot by 94-foot metal building that the roof is now collapsed, as you can see in the pictures. And they are just requesting that they are able to rebuild it in the exact same location on the existing foundation. And it's where it currently is now. It was destroyed in the storm Atlas. It's currently served by an onsite wastewater treatment system that was installed in 1973. One of the concerns we have in regards to that is they're currently using that as a parking lot. One of the conditions we asked to be added is that they block this off by either a fence or some type of physical barrier. That is the condition that we've added, or recommend that be added to it. They are required to have by ordinance some 34, depending on the use they have in there, from 34 to 140 off-street parking spaces. They currently only have about 20, or 34, around 20 parking spaces that they can have on the property. There's no way using the existing parcel to have that many parking spaces, and thus they are asking to waive that requirement. It is possible if they built a smaller structure to meet those setbacks, they would have to, of course, put in new foundations and redo that. It would also be a smaller building. DNR has looked at the existing septic system, they've indicated- They've indicated it is large enough, or it is, uh, what was there previously, so they kinda wanna, uh, indicated they are okay as long as they keep the same use in that drain field. Of course, our concern is, is that to keep the vehicles off of the drain field, and that's why we're recommending to put some kind of physical barrier up, keeping people from parking on top of it. There are currently no signs of it failing, and they do have a operating permit for the existing drain field. With that, if you approve this, we are recommending that you put two conditions on as, uh, one is that this is only good for the community center. Uh, any additional additions would have to go through either a variance request if there, uh, need a reduction in the setbacks in that they put a physical barrier around the drain field.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, so, um, Dan, if, if you, you mentioned about twenty parking spaces. So if they fence off the drain field, then will it be less than twenty, or that does include the twenty?
No, that would be reducing it even further than what they have now. They could actually put some parking behind on the grass area behind the building, and then there's also, they also utilize, I believe, the church parking lot. They utilize a number of, around the whole area, and I don't even know if there's a hundred and forty parking space, spaces anywhere in Johnson Siding unless they use the church parking areas.
I, I guess I'd like to see a couple more, um, um, conditions placed on this variance, if in fact the variance gets approved. And one of the conditions would be that the, the variance is only granted if they're, if they build back on the existing foundation. If they have to tear the foundation out and start over, then, uh, the variance wouldn't be approved.
And I actually wrote up a condition, if you'd like that, that could be added, that if the structure cannot utilize the existing foundation, the required setbacks must be met.
Okay. And then the second one is that they not, um, put the garage door, uh, along the side of the building where the drain field is, because that just encourages people to drive across it, to, I mean, that's the only way to get in. So to remove that garage door and relocate it if they're gonna have a garage door into that portion of the building. So could you?
Yep, I got, I wrote up one that, that the side access door be moved away from the drain field.
So I don't know, having made those discussion items, if I could make the motion now or somebody else needs to make it?
Someone might help you out by saying something in between.
Well, you waited sort of an appropriate amount of time between the discussion and the motion.
I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the variance with the, now we got four conditions, is that correct?
Correct.
The two that the equalization, or the planning office had, plus the two that was just added during this discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does anyone wish to comment on, on the motion?
I would ask, uh, one question.
Come up to the podium, please.
Mike, come up.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Come up, come up here. State your name. State your name.
I'm Mike Ryan, and I'm representing the community center again. Uh, the question I'm gonna ask, and we just talked about this briefly, was we have that approximate drain field location shown there, and I'm just wondering if Dan, off the top of his head, can, uh, if I ask the question, we're, we're sloping right there, Dan, and I'm not sure if that existing drain field is at three foot or four foot or even two Obviously, we wanna try to maintain, uh, the correct depth if we can, but could we possibly put some clean rock or something like that, build that up a foot right there in that approximate drain field location to be allowed to keep that parking in that area because that parking is, is an issue? And I was just sitting over there right now, and, and I'm looking at that, wondering, you know, it always has been parking right there, and we've never busted that, um, from the, the cars that were allowed to park there before, and there, there's not really been an issue. Is there something that we can do to, uh, make that work?
Uh, we've never allowed vehicles to park on top of a drain field. It does cause compaction, and we're hoping that this is still working, uh, drain filter, and it's not compacted, so, uh, I couldn't recommend that you do anything other than block it off to keep people from parking on it. And, uh, so we, we couldn't make that recommendation.
Um, I think what we're gonna do is, what we're, what we should do is, we should probably locate that drain field and see just exactly where it is. We do know that the system is working at, uh, uh, there hasn't been any issue, and, and it does work, but possibly if we were able to locate where that existing drain field is, maybe we've got more parking in there than what we think. And so we'll probably do an exploratory hole. If you see us digging out there, that's what we'd be looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess that's that. Okay?
Well, while you're there, Mike, um, I, I guess I have a question in relation to the green line that is drawn there as opposed to where it really is. I mean, that's an approximation, I take it. And if it should happen that it doesn't include entrance to that door, if the drain field isn't obstructing the entrance to that door, then would the condition relative to that door that's in the motion be a factor?
I, I just, I, I think my motion, uh, as it relates to that door and the drain field is relocate the door, if it, if the door is in front of the drain field, relocate it. If it's not in front of the drain field, then obviously it doesn't need to be relocated, but just to make sure that we're not driving over the drain field to get in the drawer, door.
And the condition, the way it's written, is that the side ax door, side access door be moved away from the drain field.
Yeah, and if it's, and if it's not at the drain field, then he doesn't have to move it.
Correct.
Fair enough.
Just so we understand each other. Okay, any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
We have...
Motion amount of Board of Adjustment?
Motion and a second to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, twenty-four.
Brittany Malater, Water Protection Coordinator. Item A is, uh, Spring Creek, Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Overview. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge a couple of guests in the audience here from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. They are project officers for the project, Pete Jaras and Barry McClory. So, if you have any questions throughout the presentation for them. Oops. So I'll basically begin with the project area. The red area there is where Spring Creek goes through. It starts in the headwaters of Medicine Mountain, runs through Hill City, down to Sheridan Lake. We also have a few tributaries. Sunday Gulch here, this is Sylvan Lake, Custer State Park, Newton Fork, runs along Deerfield Road, and this purple right here is Palmer Creek. I guess, excuse me. The biggest thing, um, to keep in mind here is that eighty-five percent of this project area is public land, and Hill City is the only municipality. The majority of the land use is civil culture, recreation, tourism. Annually, one to two million people visit the area attractions, and about seven thousand cars per day travel through Hill City. So why are we here? Why do we have a project? A TMDL was done on Spring Creek, and a TMDL is the total amount of a pollutant a stream can handle before it exceeds the standards. And the TMDL was approved on Spring Creek in two thousand eight and on Sheridan Lake in two thousand six. In two thousand fourteen, the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources released the integrated report that listed two additional impairments of E. coli and total suspended solids on the creek. So what is the Spring Creek Implementation Project? Once a TMDL is done on the creek, um, it's eligible for three-nineteen funds to bring the stream in, back into compliance with stream standards. The Spring Creek Project began in two thousand ten. Segment one implemented pilot BMPs, developed, developed planning documents, provided public outreach and education, and provided some water quality monitoring to help prioritize BMP implementation areas. So when we talk about BMPs or best management practices, those are what the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources recommended in the Spring Creek TMDL Assessment Study as ways to mitigate the impairments in the creek. And some of those recommended BMPs were livestock access, stream bank stabilization, filter strips, animal confinement facilities, septic inspection program, litter control programs, and stormwater BMPs. So as far as the Spring Creek Project, what are the goals? The goals were identified in the Spring Creek Implementation Plan, and those goals were to implement best management practices, provide education and outreach, and provide water quality monitoring. So the project consists of segments, essentially not years, it goes by segment. Segment one was done from June two thousand ten to December two thousand twelve, and it's currently completed. Uh, we are in segment two of the project, and here is the timeline and the milestones that were identified in the plan. You can see the milestones to be completed by June two thousand fifteen, where some stream bank projects, some forest prod, excuse me, stormwater projects, wastewater, onsite wastewater treatment system improvements, water quality monitoring reports, meetings, advisory group meetings. So that leads us to the advisory group. The advisory group was formed in two thousand ten by the Board of Commissioners. They were appointed by the Board of Commissioners to provide technical assistance to the board and to evaluate the cost share applications and provide recommendations. Currently, there are nine agency reps, representatives, excuse me, and four landowners on the advisory group. And these representatives are various experts in hydrology, conservation, wildlife management, and engineering. Those are some of the members. So what happens when an applicant or a producer or a landowner submits an application for cost share? Once an application is received, it is reviewed by staff, and then staff, the consultant, and maybe a representative from other agencies meet with the landowner and go through the ranking process. There are ranking sheets for each type of BMP to be implemented, and those ranking sheets are based on, you know, some basics, location, type of improvement. In the case of a septic system, the age of the system, the size of the area for riparian areas, the longevity of the improvements, and then if the landowner's willing to document and do some water quality monitoring on the program. Once the projects are ranked, they are reviewed by staff and then brought forth in front of the advisory group. The advisory group then reviews these ranking sheets and makes recommendations to the board based on the technical merit of the project. So as far as the statistics of the recommendations, these are statistics of the cost share applications that we've received. In segment one, that segment is actually closed, but during that segment, we received about eighty-seven cost share applications requesting five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in funds. There was only about two hundred thousand dollars available for cost share. The Board of Commissioners approved about twenty-six percent of those eighty-seven, and then there was about fourteen percent of those eighty-seven implemented. Some of those were not implemented during that segment either because they were rolled over into segment two, or the property owners did the projects on their own without cost share funds, or they pulled the projects for whatever reasons. And then in segment two, to date, we've received thirty-two cost share applications. The advisory group has actually recommended six of those projects, which is about nineteen percent to the board, and the board's approved two of those projects to date. So I'm gonna go into some examples of these best management practices. Um, the first is the riparian BMPs, and this is actually a riparian project that was done and funded by the project. And I'm actually going to defer this to Pete Roush with Respec because he was the engineer and helped design this project, so he can kind of explain what was done on the project and why it was done, and what kind of impacts it will have as far as the project, so.
Good morning. I'm Pete Roush, Water Resource Engineer with Respec Consulting. So as Brittany alluded to, what we're looking at here is a, uh, stream bank stabilization project that we completed in the fall of two thousand thirteen. Uh, it's a project on Spring Creek. The, the landowner had two problem areas on his property here. Uh, there were two different meanders that were, uh, cutting the banks. The photo on the top, um, is kinda hard to see, but that, that had a failing bank, the top of the bank. Oh, sure. Yeah, the, uh, the top of the bank was maybe, maybe four feet above the, the channel bottom, and it was just a, a straight drop and starting to undercut along that bend. Uh, the, the bottom one, this was actually about eight feet above the channel bottom, and, uh, again, straight, straight drop, cutting the bank and undercutting. And so what we did was, uh, we used NRCS specifications to design what we call, uh, rock toe to stabilize and hold in place, uh, that, uh, the bottom of, of each bank, and you can see that here. Uh, with, with this one, because it was so extreme, it's a real tight bend, we, we also added in what we call a stream barb, which is essentially, uh, rocks, we designed the shape and the size, the dimensions of these rocks placed in the stream to jut out from the bank into the stream, and that, uh, it helps to burn the energy, uh, as the stream comes through the meander, and it helps to push the, the main flow away from the bank. Uh, after these photos were taken, uh, the, the landowner got, uh, grass pretty well established. Uh, he got real lucky with the moisture we had late last year. And then this spring, what we have yet to do is to go in and plant willows along here. Now, BMPs like this, these stream bank stabilization, they serve two purposes when we're talking about water quality. Uh, the first is to, uh, protect and promote any vegetation on those stream banks, which helped to, and up into the transitional area, you know, up along the, the crest of the bank, uh, which, which helped to, um, that vegetation serves to, to filter out pollutants out of runoff that's coming down into the creek. Uh, the second purpose is they add diversity and complexity to the channel, which help to trap pollutants in the stream itself. Then, uh, practices like this, stream barb have the additional benefit of, um, putting fish habitat in the stream where, where there wasn't none before. Do you have any questions about that?
Any questions from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I think I'll turn it back to Brittany.
Thank you, Pete. And then the other aspect, um, BMP or best management practice or septic system improvements. Um, most of the septic system improvements in the watershed have been replacing either outhouses, or this is typical of a steel tank that you will see come out of the ground. So here's the segment one budget. Um, this segment is actually completed. You can see the project accomplishments. We got six riparian projects implemented, six onsite wastewater treatment system improvements. We completed... We completed water quality monitoring in 2010, eleven, and a portion of 2012. We do have draft forms of the planning documents, the stormwater management plan, the septic management plan, and the ten-year strategic plan. We developed a project website. We did public outreach, three direct mailings, three public meetings, two field tours, and consultant staff and other sponsoring agencies met with over two hundred residents. As far as the funds, this includes all the three nineteen funds, local match, in-kind, everything. You'll see about sixty percent of it was three nineteen and federal funds, and the other forty percent was match.
I guess I'm a little confused. Did we actually spend that six hundred and eighty-four thousand?
That was actually the, what was spent, there was four hundred and fifteen thousand and three ninety-three dollars and forty cents in three nineteen, can you shut the lights now? Sorry. In three nineteen funds. This local agency match, some of that was actual funds, some of it was in-kind, which is they provided staff hours to the project. This landowner match, the majority of that was actually a cash match. This private agency match, that was either dollars or they paid for a product, mailings, things like that as part of their budget. And then there was other federal, the Forest Service paid for some monitoring on Palmer Creek.
But when I look over here on this one thing you gave us, you said for segment one, there was Board of Commissioners approved twenty-three projects utilizing one hundred fifty-six thousand, nine fifty-eight, and implemented out of that twenty-three was only twelve for forty-three thousand for 'oh six.
Right, and that forty-three thousand is part of this three nineteen fund.
So where's the, where'd the rest of the money go?
Well, so here's the actual breakdown, the allocation of funds.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The funds went to, thirty percent of them went to water quality monitoring. Thirty-two percent went to information, education, and project management. There was about twenty-five percent here went to that plan development, the stormwater plan, septic management plan, and strategic plan, and then there's another about thirteen percent here that went to BMP implementation.
Thirteen percent went to the?
To the best management practices.
Okay.
And it just, uh...
That doesn't sound like a very good percentage of spending money and getting a product, does it?
In segment one, it was very planning-heavy, and that's very typical for these types of projects. These planning documents will provide us guidance going into further segments. They identify areas where larger, and I'll get to that here, where larger stormwater projects, feasibility studies, things like that may be applicable, but Pete and Barry can probably speak to this, but, and I can go into it. But there are certain requirements when you have three nineteen funds, federal funds, that they do require some of these planning documents and these outreach programs and things like that as part of it. So moving into segment two is where you get into the more BMP or best management practice implementation, where you get more of those types of projects on the ground. And so that's where we are with this budget, and segment two is where we're currently at, but we've only gotten one riparian project on the ground and one septic system on the ground. We've done quite a bit of water quality monitoring still, but most of the three nineteen funds in this have been spent with water quality monitoring. And then the project management, actually that includes when the consultants or staff go out and initially meet with the landowners, and they do the assessment, and they go through the cost share application, and they go through the ranking sheet. So that's time and cost for that under that one. And then here's our progress to date for segment two. We were awarded five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and six dollars in three nineteen funds. One hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and six of it was rolled over from segment one. But if you look under the water quality, these are all the four tasks that were identified in the implementation plan. We have spent all of the water quality monitoring. We have completed essentially that task of our plan. Under the public outreach and project management, we've allocated or spent about seventy-eight percent of that. But in the septic system improvements and the riparian stormwater improvements, we have not allocated or obligated those funds for improvements. So moving on to the segment two amendment, we had submitted an amendment to DNR in October of 2013, and that amendment was requesting three hundred and forty-eight thousand of additional funds for a full-time coordinator in water quality monitoring. DNR did not approve the request for the additional funds. However, for some reason, I guess there was some misconception that DNR did not pull the remaining funds. We still had, we still have the five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and six dollars of funds to work. Moving forward, however, we were, oh, or I guess I don't know what the correct word, but we were advised that there may be some discretionary funds in the amount of about sixty-five thousand dollars available for water quality monitoring to add since we had obligated all of those funds to continue monitoring into 2014. And then as far as the segment two amendment, because it was not approved with those budget tables that we had submitted, we'll need to update those budget tables, and that's part of the next item on the agenda as far as the next plan. So this is moving forward to the updated plan. So the updated plan would request additional funds for water quality monitoring. It would provide an line item area for engineering and cultural resources for implementation of the best management practices. Almost all of the riparian BMPs and things need some kind of engineering. There's cultural resources involved. There's permit applications and things through the state and the federal, through the Corps of Engineers. There's a floodplain development permit through our office. There's different permit process, so that would cover some of those things. And then in the updated plan, Pennington County would actually provide the project management, and the consultant would provide the engineering and technical assistance on the project. So the future of the Spring Creek Implementation Project, moving into a proposed segment three would be the large stormwater projects as identified in the stormwater plan, a sewer line feasibility to study, and then revisiting that Mitchell Lake sediment removal. If you notice, this is courtesy of the Forest Service. They had taken these pictures in May of 2012, but this is Mitchell Lake after a storm, and you can see that it captures quite a bit of this sediment. And if anyone's been out there lately, you can see that the sediment has filled up that lake considerably, and that dredging project is probably needed at some time in the future because this is actually the best BMP that we have right now to protect Sheridan Lake, and this is a normal. So I guess I would entertain any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm just having a hard time following your figures. How much money do we have in segment two left to spend?
We have about two hundred and seventy-two thousand that isn't been spent.
So what's this five hundred thousand you were talking about just a few minutes ago?
The five hundred ten thousand, six oh six was the original amount of what we were awarded. So it's right here, this was the original amount, the one eighty-six for riparian, the fifty-six in septic system improvements, the one hundred and seventy-eight thousand in public outreach and project management, and the ninety thousand, six hundred and six dollars in water quality monitoring.
So if I take the five hundred and ten and subtract out what's already been spent, that's when I come up with the two seventy-two?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
Correct.
And do you have a breakdown then of, is this, is this chart show me the breakdown of where we're going to spend that two hundred and seventy-two? Where?
Right, this is where the current plan is, where we would spend. We still have about thirty-nine thousand left in outreach and management to spend that. We have about fifty-three thousand in the septic system improvements to spend, and a hundred and fifty-five thousand in the riparian and stormwater BMPs.
Okay. And when you say a hundred and fifty-five thousand in riparian and stormwater, that's actually going to go to a project, or is that design in it too?
That's designing and going to the project. So in, for this, like for these three nineteen funds, and if you look back here, a lot of times, this landowner match, that hundred and fifty-five thousand is matched by the property owners or the landowners on those types of projects. Now, the county, when we go out and meet with them, there'll be some in-kind, but there's not a significant...
It just seems like we're spending a lot of money and not getting a lot of things actually done. Or, does it?
No, the BMPs are the, is what will essentially bring the creek back into compliance. That's what was identified. We've done a lot of the planning and the upfront work, yes, but we haven't got a lot of the best management practices on the ground.
Is, is the part of the problem, I mean, segment two from June of 2012 to the present, I mean, we've done seven percent, something like that. Is that our problem? Is that our fault that we're not approving your projects? Is that part of the problem?
The projects aren't getting, well, we did...
Or is it that no one's applying for them?
No, we have interest, we have applications. They're just not getting approved to get put on the ground.
Not getting approved by the, by the county commission?
Because if you go back to, like here, the advisory group recommended about six projects for approval, requesting a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Majority of those were large stormwater and riparian, or, excuse me...
Those other four, did we vote against them then at some point in time?
Those were ones that were put on hold, those were those large riparian projects that were continued.
And they just haven't come back before us?
Right, not till March fourth.
I see.
So because we haven't spent money, we're not going to get any more money?
I can't answer that.
Is that plainly what you're gonna, what you're saying, telling us? We didn't get approved for any more money because we didn't spend enough the first time around?
Well, I'll defer to the...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, excuse me, Pete Jaras, South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources out of Puer. Uh, no, that's not the case. As with any program, whether it be state, federal, county, we have to take a look at how to make things work. DNR is very much behind the Spring Creek project. When we looked at where they were and the dollars that they had remaining, we made the decision as staff that we felt that with a little additional funding, this project could get by another funding cycle, that they could actually come in again this fall and apply for segment three, and this additional funding will carry the project over till those dollars are actually available. And I'm talking about the federal dollars. What we've been doing for the last three years due to declining federal allocations is we've got a state program that we have kind of been trying to backfill. It's what we call our Clean Water State Revolving Water Quality Grant Funds. And by doing some of these things like we did with Spring Creek, and they were the ones that we did it to this year, or recommended to the task force that we try and get them through to the next funding cycle, we've done that in the past numerous times, and this allows us not only to be a little bit more economical with our three nineteen funds, it also allows us to save some of our water quality funds for other activities.
Okay, so in other words, in us plain language guys, we're getting less money from the feds, and so you're trying to make it go further.
That's correct.
In, how many more projects do you, does the state have going like this?
We've currently got fourteen, what we call total implementation projects. Actually, the ones, there are ten of them that are actually putting BMPs on the ground. We have four, well, three kind of statewide projects. One of them is our non-point source information and education, which is a statewide effort that we run through the South Dakota Discovery Center. And then we have two planning and technical assistance projects that provide assistance to all of the projects if they needed. It's a statewide effort. One of them we call the three oh three D Technical Assistance Project. That's just reference to section three oh three D in the Clean Water Act. And then we have a grasslands management project, which is also a statewide technical assistance project, which provides grassland management, planning, and assistance not only to project areas, our other ten implementation projects, but also to individual producers across the state.
And you may not, you may not know all of these, but can you tell me what some of those ten are?
The only other one out west is the Belfoush River Project. Over east, we've got the entire Big Sioux River covered in essentially four different projects. We've got, we've got the Upper Big Sioux River sponsored by the City of Watertown. We've got Lake Ponsett North Central Big Sioux Area, which is sponsored by the Hamlin Conservation District. We have Central Lower Big Sioux Project Area, which is sponsored by the City of, excuse me, sponsored by Moody Conservation District. We have Lewis and Clark Project, which is both east and west of the Missouri River. That's sponsored by the Randall Resource Conservation and Development Council. We have the Vermillion River Basin Project sponsored by the McCook Conservation District. We have the Lower James River Project, which is sponsored by, oh, James River Water Development District. Thanks, Barry. And then we have, I believe, the last one would be our Northeast Glacial Lakes Project. That's also a restoration plus protection project with some of the pristine lakes that we have up in that area. And that includes a number of different lake basin areas, plus we added several years ago the Little Minnesota River Drainage Basin to help address some of the issues with the Mississippi River hypoxia issue. A little sliver of that drains into that whole system, so I think that pretty well covered it.
And all of these projects are similar to what we've, we're trying to do here with Spring Creek, stop erosion and...
Correct. The majority of them deal with erosion. A lot of them over there, of course, have sediment issues, total suspended solids, and, but they all have bacteria issues too. Most of them have bacteria issues, so. They spend, we do, this is a little different only in that we're dealing with maybe more of a, a smaller area. Most of these other projects cover, you know, millions of acres, and we deal with large animal, well, not concentrated, but we can only spend money on feedlots that are less than a thousand head, and so there are a lot of dollars that go into those type of activities. Lot of riparian activity. We're trying to push more and more of our dollars into riparian activities now in all of those projects.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Pete, can you tell us how much that Big Sioux Project cost?
Oh, the total budget for it is going to be in the millions of dollars right now. So the City of Sioux Falls has contributed in the neighborhood of two million dollars. What, what, what they have, they get loans through our drinking water and our Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund type of, you've probably, you've gotten loans, I'm sure, through that. And there's what we call a non-point, non-point source incentive loan that they can get. In other words, they, if, if they want to get some money to help do BMPs out in the watershed, they can do that at, basically, there's a lower interest rate that goes along with that. So they essentially borrow more money for a reduced rate and end up not paying any more interest if they would have just borrowed the money at the normal interest rates. So it gives them an opportunity to put some money out to help their situation and the issues that they have within the river in the City of Sioux Falls, so.
So Pete, with the DNR, and I presume your contacts with the Environmental Protection Agency of the Feds, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing here with the money that we're spending?
Yes.
And putting into this project?
Yes, and I know you, you're a little bit concerned about more money being spent on upfront management and planning, but that's, that's the way all of these projects take off. I mean, the first two years of implementation always involves a lot more getting the word out, talking to people, doing some planning, and pulling all that information together. And generally, you see them as they move into third, fourth, and fifth years, they really start to take off. So, yes, very much so.
Right. And so...
And so, with that in mind, the money that we're spending is, you say it's about in the ballpark, I presume? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and getting done up till now what we should have probably gotten done, other than building the plan and doing all of the legwork ahead of time? Is there any thoughts in any of your conversations with the DNR or the EPA, pulling the funds from the 319 project on Spring Creek and doing away with it because it's incompetent and not, and spending too much money?
No, that conversation's never been had and we're fully supportive in DNR of this project. We like the project, it's a good project. And of all of our projects right now, this one has the potential to be the most successful because you're dealing with a smaller area and some pretty defined issues, whereas when we, we take these large projects, um, you're spreading yourself a little thin. We are trying to, to prioritize more and, and actually the prioritization is moving us down, you know, within a mile or less of what we call our impaired segments. And, and you're already doing that here in this project because of, of the way that's, this project is set up. And it's not uncommon, most of our projects spend at least a third or better, and it's going to get more of their 319 funds on management. Because there are other funds, and, and you're a little unique in this way because there's a lot of other money through USDA to put in BMPs on our eastern projects. Out here in the Spring Creek, you don't have access to those as much, so, uh, the 319 are important not only from a, a management standpoint, but for the BMPs also.
So there's no talk about closing this project down, as you, as you just stated?
That's correct, no talk about it.
The money's gonna, the money's gonna be there. The only thing that didn't happen is we didn't, um, and you, you guys didn't approve of a full-time employee, and this commission didn't approve that also. So that's the only hitch that there's ever been in there that I'm aware, is that correct?
We're fully supportive of the project. We've never discussed closing the project down. We want to see progress. The project has made progress up to this point and we feel that there's just going to be good things going on in the future and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to fund it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Brittany, you, part of this is your plan to maybe, uh, apply for $65,000 of discretionary funds for continued water quality monitoring?
Correct.
So, because we've expended all of the anticipated budget for water quality monitoring?
Correct.
And, so what happens if you don't get to $65,000?
Then we don't monitor water quality, or we could move around, I believe we could move around funds within the existing 272,000 funds around to-
This preliminary budget can be changed, I take it then?
Well, it's up to you, yes, if you don't want to take the discretionary funds. The reason, um, Pete had proposed those to us is so we didn't take away funds from the best management practices.
All right.
And, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So Brittany, what do you need to proceed with, uh, today's program?
Well, item B is actually the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project Implementation Plan Update. And if you go to tab 12 in your books, that actually the plan with the budget changes is in there. Um, you can, it's on 11 by 17, it's easier to-
Well, we're ready for item B, which is the request for discretionary funding and updated budget. Those are on two separate sheets that are outside of your book. Is there any questions or comments about item B? I think you've covered a little bit, but there may be other questions?
And I can explain it a little better as far as the budget tables and the movement of money through and, throughout the budget here. If you look at, uh, the CWSRF line item, that is the state funds, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund that Pete was actually just referring to as the state's actual contribution to the project. And then, in the plan, it would be requesting that 65,000 of discretionary funds from DNR for water quality monitoring. It would be moving 24,439 dollars from the On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Improvements and allocating 10,000 to the riparian and 8,500 to Public Outreach Record Keeping Report Grand Writing and 5,939 dollars to Evaluation and Monitoring.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I am sort of always been in favor of the On-Site Wastewater Treatment Systems and spending money there as opposed to riparian. Why are we taking money out of that?
There was some discussion about our ordinance and as far as our ordinance of having to fix them anyway and having funds available to, to do that, I, that was kind of the phasing out of that BMP because of our ordinance.
That's provided our ordinance and we get around to inspecting any of those down there?
But that was the actual, that's the thought behind it. Now, if you don't want to remove that and you want to reallocate the funds somewhere else and not remove that, and then we have to work with the water quality monitoring without that 24,000? Moving from there, I mean, that, if, that's your-
We have discussed and looked at, that we're spending a lot of money and not doing anything. And now we're going to take more money out of doing something into not doing anything. That, I, I guess we're, and one, we're moving some into riparian, uh, which will help that, but, I mean, I understand the need for public outreach and understand the need for evaluation and monitoring and it seems like that's where our money goes and that's where we spend the money and that's the federal government way and, um, I don't like it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Brittany and maybe Pete might be able to answer some of this also. Can, can we ask about need to give people money to do septic tanks and septic drain fields and things on that order? That the need of funds, of public funds to do these things, or can we, uh, pick and choose the people that really need help to do their septic systems and, uh, get those done, that really need the help to do it, rather than ones that have money to pay for themselves to give them the taxpayer's money?
When we look at the projects, we look at them from the ranking perspective. So, as far as what, whether they can afford it or not, the advisory group and staff, we don't necessarily look at that side of it, no.
But can we do that legally? Cause I, I might want to ask-
I, I do not know the answer to that question.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, 319 funding is, is, uh, funding that's supposed to be used to, uh, improve water quality. It has nothing to do with need and the answer would be no. We would frown on that very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
The, the money that you want to put into water quality monitoring, i- is that, I assume then you've come up with a plan on what you're going to monitor, how much you're going to monitor and the cost associated with that?
We have a general idea of what the costs would be. What we do from year to year with the water quality monitoring is we look at how much money we have available and how many sites we can do for the money that we have. So if you guys were to say you have $50,000 to monitor, get done what you can get done, we could prioritize areas that we feel would be the most important. We would, I would recommend that we still continue the geomean monitoring because we believe that that has more value. But, in the past, we have planned our monitoring program based about, around the money that we had. We've scaled it back each year, um-
I'd, I'd rather base our water monitoring on what we should be doing, rather than the funds that we got available-
Sure.
-or what we want to do. I mean, on one hand, it kind of makes it feel like, oh, we're doing all this monitoring because we got the money, we need to spend it, versus, jeez, we need to go out and, and monitor X amount so we know whether or not we're having a, a, uh, impact on what the problem is. And, at least over the last year, it looked to me like we were doing a lot of monitoring and I'm not sure that, I, I guess I, I'm not a water monitoring specialist, but it, how much monitoring do you really need to do and to be able to tell whether or not we're having an impact?
Sure. And part of it, when, when I say that we scaled back, um, when it went back to the use attainability analysis when our advisory group and when we looked at priority areas in those upper areas, we quit monitoring there. Part of it was budget, part of it was, we didn't feel that it was a high priority and we didn't need to spend the money there. We, it would have been better spent monitoring in other areas. There are some tributaries that we're not seeing a whole lot of loading or exceedances come out of there, so those ones would probably be low priority areas. So we have, you know, when we look at our data and we look at the watershed, we can prioritize things that we see that are important. We have BMPs that are going in, in areas, we have exceedances that are greater in some areas and not in some areas, that we would prioritize whether we sample upstream and downstream of those. So those are kind of, you know, what we take into consideration when we look at the monitoring. When we did the stormwater monitoring, we feel like we've got a good handle on what's happening during storm events, so we probably won't revisit that for a while because we had some good years with that. With the geomean monitoring, we just have one year of doing that, so we would like to revisit that same monitoring. I know, you probably, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, all these projects are a balancing act. The one area in, in all of our other projects, uh, well, we probably have two or three other projects that have done a, a better job at monitoring. But, that's, and this is across the nation, it's because everybody wants to implement and, and we all know that that's where we want to spend our dollars. Eventually, all these projects get there, but the one thing that suffers through all of them is monitoring. And so we've been very encouraged by this project in that they've been able to, they know where they're at. And so, once these BMPs go in and they'll start spending some money, once we get into some of the stormwater issues and so forth, we're going to be able to tell where we're basically going to get the best result from that BMP or those BMPs and actually be able to tell if the water quality has improved. Most of our other projects right now, we have a model that we run, it's a spreadsheet model that EPA has approved, that gives us the result of a BMP. It's a delivered result, excuse me, it's a site result, it is not a delivered result to the impaired reach. With continuing monitoring, we get a better picture of what's actually happening once BMPs go in. We're trying to do better, uh, but again, it's, it's hard, you just have to balance that money and, and I think they've done a good job with this project so far. And, and we'll get there. They just take time. Changes take time. You know, most of these projects that we're implementing in right now, it may be 50 years before some of them are going to know what's actually happened. This project, I think we're going to be able to do that a lot sooner.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Pete, I guess I should have kept you up when you were there. I know it's put you in a touchy spot, but, um, I asked a question and if you feel you can answer it, I'd like to have the answer. Is Respec doing the job that we hired them to do? And, um, with the amount of money that we're paying them, are we getting what we're supposed to have, you think?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, we have three projects that Respec is involved in to a certain extent, some less or some more. One is the Belfoush, the other is the Central Big Sioux Project. And to answer your question, yes. They do an excellent job of, of preparing projects for implementation and then continuing to assist them through that process, especially with some of the modeling and so forth that they're able to do for these projects. City of Sioux Falls has worked very closely with Respec over the last two or three years, so, yes.
Okay, I want to ask another one that's going to be kind of touchy also. Do you see any, do you see any problem with collusion between people that work for Respec and the School of Mines and Technology?
I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't know who you're talking about and so I really can't answer that question.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
Your bet.
Any other questions or comment? Okay, we are on item B and the question is whether or not the commission wishes to adopt the motion that's suggested.
I'm going to make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, to approve the Spring Creek Watershed Management Implementation Plan Project, requesting $65,000 of discretionary funds from DNR for water quality monitoring and moving $10,000 from task two to task one.
Second. We have a motion and a second, um-
Which for the public is, moving $10,000 from On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Improvements to Riparian Stormwater Livestock Grazing Forest and Lake Improvements and not moving any to Public Outreach or Evaluation and Monitoring.
Any other comments relative to, to the motion?
I think you can second it, didn't you?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Dan Richer, um, I got one question before we start. If the federal government cuts all the funds off and their, and then the state starts prioritizing, which they should anyway, and moves all the money to east and we lose all our federal and state funding, are you guys prepared to continue this project with Pennington County taxpayer money? Guess I'm asking, is this, is it as high a priority as it's being led to believe that you guys will actually take and use Pennington County taxpayer money to finish this project?
My, I, I'll, I'll respond somewhat to that. And that is that in an area like Hill City and the Sheridan Lake area and the development that occurs in the Black Hills with the geology as variable as it is, that if nothing is done on this part of Spring Creek, the eventuality is that it will be an open sewer. And in my experience, when people individually see a problem, they step up and take care of it. And so, when and if the situation occurs that you, you hypothesize that someone will do something, whether it's this, this commission or someone else.
Okay, well then I'd like to continue because, um, in the 2012 Integrated Report and the 2012, or 2014 draft, uh, report, it says the Black Hills region traditionally has some of the best surface water quality in the state. This is due in large part to a cooler climate, higher precipitation than the surrounding plains as a result of greater elevation and forest cover. Also contributing to the water quality is, uh, this region is local bedrock formations which are much less erodable. However, the Black Hills streams are vulnerable to losses of flow exacerbated by periods of drought, which we can't fix any of that. In addition, high summer ambient temperatures cause elevated water temperatures and, and as a result of temperature impairments for cold water fisheries. We can't do nothing about that. Unless we're all going to dry preuses, I guess. And that's, that's been a, that's- And that's, that's been a, that's been through 2010, 2012, and 2014 draft. So by the, the, DENR is on a mission, we have better water quality than, than anywhere else in the state traditionally. Now, I'm not saying it's perfect, because it's, because it's not. And the problem I have is I cannot find any documentation in all these reports where the DENR justifies adding temperature and sediment to Spring Creek, which was briefed in the report that they've added two more pollutants to the creek. I can't find any documentation in any of the reports. The other thing I would like to address.
Can I just answer that real quick? It's actually on page 91 of the 2014 Integrated Report.
There it is.
Or, I never interrupted these people. I didn't say there wasn't one, I just couldn't find one. There's a lot of documentation that you've got to digest, and I've been at this for a week. The other thing is, is I got a, since the October snowfall, I've been going out to four sites on Spring Creek, and using this device that was given to me by, the voluntary water monitoring, where you're watching, and this device is used to monitor suspended solids. And after the 20, after the October 4th storm, I waited about a week for a melt to start, and checked for a week, one a week in four different locations, one at where the creek goes under Highway 16385 near the overpass, one where the creek goes over, or goes under, I'm sorry, Old Hill City Road at the overpass, along the creek where the creek widens out into what they, what everybody calls the fishing hole up there between Hill City and Three Forks, and the overpass where the creek runs under Highway 16 at Three Forks. And I've been able to see this disc, you put water in it, you drop this disc in until you can't see it anymore, until it gets blurry, and I've never been above one of these, during this whole, this whole, and this creek's been running pretty good since the melt. And it did until we started getting cold snaps and it started freezing up, and I wasn't going out there in the ice trying to get these samples. So I don't know where they're getting their data from, but, and I know this is, this is a pretty rough instrument, and it probably didn't cost that much money, but it worked pretty good, because you can see how far down you go. The other thing that's been brought up on, throughout these reports, is beneficial uses. And by their own, by their definition, or state's definition, and affordable beneficial uses are those beneficial uses which at a minimum can achieve imposition of affluent limits required under all these rules, inclusive and cost-effective and reasonable best management practices for non-point source control. Basically, that's telling me, don't waste your money where, where you can't fix the problem. The other thing that, that ran, that runs through all of these reports is educating the landowners to voluntarily repair their own property. And it states it in several places, in both the Non-Point Source Pollution Program and the Integrated Report, that they should be, before we go out there and start throwing money at them, we should educate them into fixing their own property. And I think we've lost, I think that's been lost in, in the shuffle. The other thing I would like Commissioner Holloway, especially since he brought it up, and Commissioner Davis, since he brought it up, you guys go to the task force meeting and pull up the audio and listen to exactly what's being said in that meeting. And subjects that were brought up were mentioned by task force members in there.
Mr. Chair. If I might, Dan, can I ask you, then, are you saying that a task force, and you're talking about the group back in eastern part of the state, or what's that?
This is a state task force.
And apparently, these guys that are here aren't giving us the full truth, or what's the deal there? Is that what you're saying, or?
No, I'm saying you should listen to what it says and make your own conclusions. I did not say, I'm not going to pollute what was said, I'm just asking you guys to make, take the time and listen to that report and see what conclusion you come to.
I'm going to stop you here now.
I got one more thing.
The motion and the second is the subject of discussion. I've, I've given you a lot of liberty, so you can close the discussion on this now and vote on it.
Well, you know, it's your, it's your board, but.
We have a motion and a second.
Chair, I call the question.
Question's been called for. All in favor of the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Robert's rules require, if the debate is continuing, you can't call the question. That's the way I interpret Robert's rules, so I object. And there's a lot more to be said, and this one-sidedness has to end. The government gets up and speaks.
I'm going to ask you to stop talking and sit down. I'm asking you, I'm asking you. There be no more discussion. The question has been called, and the vote on the question, carried. So now we are back to the motion and the second. Any further discussion by the Commission? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, Brittany, you have a second request.
Sure. The last item is the 2014 South Dakota Integrated Report for Surface Water Quality, just the response from the Commissioners, I think, did you put that letter in the packet? Basically, in the 2014 report, they did list Spring Creek for two additional parameters of ECOI in total, suspended solids. Just as a clarification, those standards only apply from May to September 30th, from May 1st to September 30th. So right now, the standards don't apply for any of these criteria in the integrated report. So what I'm asking, the Commission to submit the letter to DENR indicating that we do have a project in Spring Creek, we acknowledge the additional impairments, and that the best management practices that are in our plan for our project will address the additional impairments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the chair's signature on the attached letter to South Dakota DENR regarding the 2014 South Dakota Integrated Report for Surface Water Quality Assessment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
First point is.
You are?
I am George Farabee, and I previously announced my name, but anyway. I can't imagine why you, sir, would sign a letter, send a letter to somebody that's at least fourth down, maybe fifth, but this young lady is at least fourth down from the Secretary of DENR. I can't imagine, that just plain, plain escapes all of my years of experience in life in the military as to how, anyway. The letter itself talks about facts that previously Spring Creek was impaired for temperature, previously. Dan Richard asked for the documentation is, didn't get an answer. He got something about Hill City is a sewer, or Spring Creek could be a sewer. Where is the documentation that Spring Creek in the project area was previously impaired for temperature? Anybody in the room answer that? Pete? Is that the case? Spring Creek, the TMDL that Scott Kenner, Ph.D., wrote, fecal coliform only. My understanding of the process is for an impairment, a parameter to be listed. On the Integrated Report, it must go through the assessment process, which is the TMDL process. Can anybody show me where the project area has ever had temperature assessed? Now, Spring Creek has had temperature assessed. Back up, I don't know that's been assessed, but it appeared on 2012 Integrated Report from Sheridan Lake down to Highway 79. It did appear there. No substantiation, however, and this is, to me, it just epitomizes the games. And this guy, by the way, is getting 600,000, his organization, 600,000 from the feds for administering these programs, I'm talking about Pete Jervish. But here's the 2012 Integrated Report. Spring Creek, Sheridan Lake to South Dakota Highway 79, temperature, delisted in 2012, delisted, applicable WQS, I presume that's water quality standard, attained, reason for recovery unspecified. So this letter is false based on facts, let's stick with facts, okay? Dan asked, where is the documentation for the new impairments that apparently appear in the draft plan, the 2014 Integrated Report for ECOI and mud, total suspended solids? Where is the study? Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get ahold of Shannon Minorich, I've talked to her a number of times over the phone, she graciously did the use of ten ability analysis at my request. She was gone before I saw this thing for the weekend, so I don't know how accurate this letter is. I know you don't want to hear any more talk, so let me just say this, before you sign that letter, sir, I'd request that you make it factual. Provide us a documentation that supports this. And Don Holloway, thank you for pointing out the 13%. I have one more thing, sir. You asked where the money's gone, our money, my grandkids' money. Not too long ago, it was $927,000. And guess what? It's up to $793,000, $798.28. What the hell we got for this? This has gone into Respec's pocket. What do we have to show for it? They're going to hand out some more, the 13% is on, and that's heavy for on-the-ground work. This has gone into Respec's pocket. In four years, we were supposed to have gotten draft plans, not you, sir, but the previous Chairman of the Commission signed a document with Todd Kenner's name on it that said the draft plans for the Strategic Treatment Plan, the Stormwater Plan, and the Septic Plan were to have been done two years ago come this June, June 2012. They're still in draft form. How long are they going to stay in draft form? This whole thing is, you get the point, this whole thing is a huge joke. Let's quit paying the money, and as Dan asked, if, if you had to look the taxpayers of Pennington County in the eye, and Spring Creek, by the way, is, is a very, in my opinion, very clean creek compared to the rest of creeks that I've seen in my lifetime. There's times in the spring, as you know, sir, when the cattle, when the waste, the manure build up from the spring, from the winter, excuse me, runs off, for a short period of time, yes, any creek, if there's livestock, will look like a sewer. Thank you.
I'm from Mead County, Mr. Commissioner, or Chairman and Commissioners.
Would you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, it's Bobby Holmerich. And I, I still think that the point of all of this is that this money that is so freely spent comes from the government, which has no money. It's the taxpayer money, and that's why I have been interested in this, is because, you know, no, I'm not a Pennington County resident, but I am a taxpayer. And one of the things that, that really interested me, it didn't turn out to be one of the DENR projects apparently, because two California residents who own a campground in Mead County in the shadow of Bear Butte have been indicted by a federal grand jury, which was announced August, it was in the paper, August 19th of the Mead County Times. The campground owners were indicted by a federal grand jury in mid-July for discharge of a pollutant from a point source into a water of the United States. The indictment alleges the defendants discharged fill material into Bear Butte Creek. Now, again, this whole issue of a waterway of the U.S., I don't know exactly what the U.S. plans to put underway up and down Bear Creek, but that's what Bear Butte Creek is now, and I'm sure Spring Creek is too. The investigation is being conducted by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. So in one creek, in one county, putting fill into a creek is a pollutant. And in another county, they're paying us to do it. I find that really weird. And the other thing, sorry, but you're wearing a DENR shirt.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Would you turn around and face, talk to us, the police, that we're the ones supposed to be hearing you?
The gentleman from the DENR was really.
I want, I guess I want to ask a question about your statement about what, who are we paying to put pollutants in the creek, and then the next order?
Oh, no, you're putting fill in the creeks, right?
Well, that's like, I thought you called that pollutants.
Well, that's what, that's what, that's what it is described at in Mead County.
Uh-huh. And so?
Fill is a pollutant.
It's sediment, it's.
Yeah, that was probably deposited there by Bear Butte Creek in the first place. It's luvio. Anyway, I noticed that, that the man from DENR really was in favor of all this testing. He wants to make sure you keep funding the testing. He's wearing a jacket from Mid-Continent Testing Labs. I don't know, might be a gift.
Mr. Chair, I call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion carried. So we have a motion and a second. Does anyone wish the motion restated?
Sure, I just want to make one comment. As far as when this integrated report was...
You can make a comment.
Oh, I can? Okay. I won't.
Works both ways.
Yep. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Let's see. Are we done? Okay. Next item is items from the chair. And there's been a request for a statement of support for the XL Pipeline. Do you have any comments regarding that? Any questions by the commission?
Well, Mr. Chair, when it comes to the XL Pipeline, I think we've probably sent at least three letters in support of the XL. And so my suggestion is, is we follow through on the same position that we've been taking and do it again if necessary.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've read quite a bit about it. To be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure one way or the other, so. It's a pretty strong letter. Think about it before I vote.
Actually, I've read the letter. I don't think it's strong enough. So I'll make a motion to authorize the chairperson's signature. Is there a second?
I'll say.
You know, maybe you want to CC this to the president. That's where, that's where the holdup is.
Well, I hope it isn't sharp enough to cut him again, so he applies for another Purple Heart.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Item 26, review of proposed bills and positions that you may wish to take. Holly, do you want to walk us through that, or are you... That way you get to talk and you don't have to listen to us all the time.
What you have in your packet is a current list of the bills that are running through the legislature right now. Some of them are marked. You took positions on several of them at the last meeting. As I was making the packets, bills were being submitted, so I couldn't get ahead of it. So this is the final list. There's four of them that I printed that I thought you guys might want to take a look at. I guess I would lean to Ron being our legislative liaison, if he has any updated information on anything moving through that he thinks we may need to address.
No. You probably have more information. I don't have any updated information. If you want a recommendation on House Bill 1177, which is a watered-down piece of, I can say something that it was introduced and is making its way through the legislature and probably will become law. It is probably about as worthless a piece of legislation as we've had for a long time. It does absolutely nothing. You want a stronger comment?
One of the things it does is it limits local government.
Of course, that's, the legislature is great for mouthing that they want local control and then turning around and taking it away. And being a secondary offense doesn't do anything. But I guess, didn't we send something out in this one?
We did. We opposed 1177, but that was before they turned it around into a no-texting while-driving bill.
I think it's passed the House, hasn't it?
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we send a letter to the Senate Committee that will be looking at it and oppose it again.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ron, can we make some suggestions on what they, how they could change it?
Sure.
And what would be good?
I think so.
I mean, I hate to just out-oppose it. I would oppose it in its current draft, but recommend that it be a primary, that they amend it to be a primary offense and that they, let's see...
Remove Section 4.
Remove Section 4, which is taking any powers away from local government. Are you making an amendment to the motion?
I would. I'll second the amendment.
Karen, are you able to keep track of that? Okay, so we have a motion to amend the motion. And second, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now the amended motion. Any further discussion? Not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Senate Bill 179 is really the one that was put in by Senator Beely from Mitchell, and that is to prohibit the use of it, to make it a primary offense, and to allow municipalities and counties to adopt stricter penalties than what the state is proposing. And I am in favor of that bill, and I would make a motion that we send, I don't know where that's at. I think that hasn't been in committee yet.
I apologize, I haven't looked this morning. I don't know where that one's at.
But I'd make a motion that we send a letter to the Senate Committee that will be looking at it in favor of Senate Bill 179.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that I think in most other things that we deal with the state of South Dakota and that we can make our rules stricter than what the state does. So I think it should continue.
Any further remarks? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
What I know about House Bill 1233, it's about recall of municipal, well, it's really a recall of all elected officials.
Correct.
By petition signed by, I think it said 25%, except the last part that they're trying to obliterate is municipalities. And in that part, it would show, it lists the reasons you can recall somebody. Habitual drunkenness, not showing up, incompetence, stuff like that. They're trying to get rid of all that, but what they're doing then is, instead of 15% of the population to sign a petition, it goes back to the 25%. So they're making it easier to recall a municipal officer, but on the other hand, making it a little bit more difficult with more signatures. And the way I read it, it's all about municipal officers. You know, I've always been of the belief that you couldn't recall a county commissioner because it's not listed, but I've changed my mind after reading this a little closer because it does say you can recall any elected executive administrative legislature judicial officer, and I'm sure we fit into that. So I think they can recall us too, but right now, you can recall, if this passes, you can recall any elected official with 25% of the people who voted for him at the last, voted in, for that office in the last election. Is that the way you read it?
That's how I understand it, and also with this bill, it would affect our budget because if this were, it's a messy, my understanding, it's a messy way to do it, first of all. But if this were to go through, counties would have to budget for special elections, which we don't now. Granted, we would be reimbursed for it, I believe, at some point in time, but this, I mean, a county-wide election for us is about $75,000. It's a big expense for the county to move forward, and we would have to start budgeting for this.
And the other, but the other side of the coin is there have been very few recall elections.
Correct. But again, possibility.
So I, I don't care what we do, one way or the other, frankly. I suspect, I don't know where the municipalities will, I haven't heard where they're standing on it.
And I believe Auditor Pearson is lobbying against this bill. So if you guys don't want to take a position one way or the other, it's just one I wanted you to make, be aware of. Then the last one would be Senate Bill 111, which I believe stems from Minnehaha County, which changes the county, what we are able to tax up to. Currently, we can go up to 3% or less. This is going to change it to 3% or greater, depending on what the CPI is set at.
But not greater than 4%?
Not greater than 4%, correct.
And obviously, it comes from Minnehaha County, who is in some financial straits.
What, they opted out seven times or something like that?
They have a real public, in law enforcement problem. They're fighting that very, they have a real problem down there. So I don't know, Commissioner Holloway got ahold of me and said, why should we support this? Because we never go to the maximum. Since I've been here, we've never used the maximum we can use.
No, and we generally bank percentages.
So I guess if we want to remain neutral on it, that's fine with me.
Janet, do you wish to comment?
Other than, like you said, though, you support another county.
House Bill 1121. We're opposed to this. The treasures across the state are opposed to this because what it does, it would allow the municipalities, anytime they do cleanup on a property, tear down a house, anything that they do on that property, in the past, the ordinance, they were not allowed to recoup that money, only the specials that didn't go away. These ordinances now will be in effect, and if they take down a house or do any cleanup on that property, before we can sell that property at tax deed, those liens are going to attach to that property.
Even if we don't make enough in the tax deed sale?
Doesn't matter. The municipalities are going to get paid first.
So we could conceivably be taking county tax money, I mean, out of our budget every year? We'd almost have to budget for that.
That's, that's my understanding. I had, I did have Jay look at the bill, but what we did is we opposed this bill. It went before the committee, and our lobbyist amended this bill and didn't fight it. So of course, that everyone is in an uproar across the state of South Dakota trying to kill this, and we just got notified this morning that it was going to the House floor to be voted on today, so we're going to have to kill it in the Senate. We don't have time to rally everybody together to get it killed today on the House floor. So we would like the backing of the commissioners to kill House Bill 1121.
That'd be my motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Janet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Holly, you mentioned one that the auditor is trying to kill. And which one was that again?
That was the special election, special recalls.
Okay.
In my understanding, just on the budgeting side of it.
I hate to remain neutral. We got a sample of that remaining neutral the other day on Bill 1097 by our own state association, and I, if the auditor's against it, I think we ought to stand with the auditor on that subject and not leave her out there by herself. You know, if it's not good for them, sure she could be good for us.
So which bill is that?
10...
1233.
Do we have a motion on that, then?
I would make a motion that we back the auditor's play on that bill, 1033. To oppose it.
1233.
And did we get a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one more statement about that bill is that I can see people down in Pierce saying, well, the auditor's complaining, but the county commission didn't, so why should we worry about, worry about it?
Any other bills that you wish to identify? If not, item 27, committee reports.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I have today is, I happened to go to a meeting last night at the Whispering Pines Fire Hall, and it came up last night that they're getting short of personnel at Whispering Pines. I know Johnson Siding is, I'm sure the other fire, volunteer fire departments around the community, around the county are doing, having the same problem. And I would like to see us come out and ask for volunteers of all sorts, men, women, to volunteer to the local fire departments as much as they possibly can, and become members, and take a stand for the fire departments. If that continues on downhill in the slide that they're doing right now, one of these days, we'll wind up with about 17 or 18 new paid fire halls with paid manning on those fire departments. So I think we ought to push the issue of getting volunteers into them.
And Danny, is there any, anything you might be able to help us with, give us some guidance on fostering that?
Not right now.
Yeah. You can come up with something, I'll catch you.
Commissioner Busch, agree?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Holloway? Cutman? I think we're done with that, so next item is items from the public. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
I have a request. Can you ask the state's attorney to research Roberts' rules relative to calling the question? In years past, there was an individual that, at any time he was tired of hearing the public comments, or any time he was tired of hearing an opposing view, he called a question. And I don't think that's proper. That's my comment. Another comment, I was at that same meeting, it was just mentioned, and manager of the co-op used the word evidence numerous times, and he used it relative to the environment. Where's the evidence that coal is, I mean, in the atmosphere that much? Natural gas is next. Where's the evidence from DNR? That Spring Creek comes from one TMDL from the CEO of Respec's brother. That's where that TMDL came from. I would highly encourage you, all five of you, if you haven't already listened, to the 319 non-point task force meeting in November. I have listened to it, listened to it twice on audio. And what that group, who is supposedly the overseer of Pete Jarish, Pete Jarish is a public servant, who's got his, he was, got a heck of a bias because that's his paycheck. The task force, I understand it, I don't know how many people, but a gathering of folks without, without that kind of biased influence. I admire the chairman, I don't know him real well, but for being a government employee, I can tend to be amazed at how straightforward and how practical he is, even though he's a government employee. I highly advise you, all five of you, to listen and see if you get the same message from that task force as you just got. This is the second time I've heard this government employee get up and say, Spring Creek is the most wonderful project in the state. That's just, just got to be way to hell off base. Thank you. Well, Don, did make it to the last meeting, but once again, my hat's off to you for trying to save the taxpayers some money. My hat's off to you, Don. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone else? If not, we have no need for an executive session unless something has come up that I'm not aware of. And so in view of that...
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. Davis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.